We're coming to the regular city council meeting, August 28, 2017. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call. Mary's not here.
I'll move to excuse Mary.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Bob's not. So I hadn't said that. Are we gonna have someone in representing them, at least from the city, for the city at some time?
I am covering, but we do have some of his department members here if you have questions.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, August 14, 2017. Does anyone have anything?
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the bills? None. Pro of the agenda.
I'd like to postpone yet again the appointment for Erin until Mary's back in. The next planning commission meeting is after that, our next meeting, so it won't impair that.
I don't have a problem voting on her tonight. I'm gonna, like I said before, I'm gonna approve her appointment. Certainly, it's up to John, it's his appointment. So I think that's your call, John.
I have no problem postponing it because based on, we were saying that we were going to get a full body to do it, and I don't think it will reflect, but I have no problem postponing it to the next meeting. I don't think it's gonna, say, we don't have a meeting anyway, so.
You second.
Yeah, I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move the minute, or the agenda as amended.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Anyone like to wish to speak about something? Please come up, state your name, phone number, address. Not your phone number.
Ashley Enstead, 1104 Chestnut Lane. Good evening, City Council, members of the audience, and all those viewing on Channel 19. My name is Ashley Enstead, and I'm a write-in candidate for mayor for the city of South Lyon. I've received the most incredible support from my friends, family, neighbors, and all of the wonderful people I've met in this city. I would like to give you a brief introduction to my academic skills and qualifications to lead this city. I have a double major from MIT, and I'm a software engineer at a major NASDAQ company. I'm from the Midwest, and I have Midwest values. My goals, when I'm hopefully elected mayor, are to focus on the city's finances and budgeting process. I also want to help in locating grants for the development of Volunteer Park and for the downtown as well. It is so crucial to provide an outlet for recreation for our families, and securing the funds to develop Volunteer Park will go a long way to benefit our sporting community. I'm a very proactive person, and as your mayor, I assure you and the residents of this city that I will help move this city forward. I'm also very sensitive to the needs of our senior community. We need to find budget solutions that do not tax our seniors who are on fixed incomes. As difficult as some of the budget problems are, I will always be mindful of our seniors and their contribution to this community. I'm also a proponent of voting to maintain People's Express and funding for the Center for Active Adults. In fact, I will work hard to ensure that the Center for Active Adults maintains its location near our senior community. I will represent their interests. All of you on City Council have made great contributions to the city, and I want to build upon your successes and help complete your vision for the city of South Lyon. That vision includes fiscal strength for our city, an economically viable downtown, and a developed Volunteer Park. As an engineer, I'm not bothered by differences in personalities. I can sift through emotions, weigh the facts, analyze the arguments, and find a solution that works for everyone. I'm a steady hand, and I believe each person has intellectual merit in public debate. I'm very qualified to be this city's mayor. At this time, I would like to thank Mr. Kramer, Mr. Waddell, and Mayor Galis for your service to the city. Best wishes to you as you transition from public life. But hopefully, if I become mayor, you will be available to me to consult on matters that may be of special interest to you, like the development of the parks, the budget, or the downtown. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Oh, Carl tonight.
It seemed right, well, Carl doesn't.
Yeah, I wish Carl was speedy recovery, he had a little bit of an accident, so he'd be better. Kinda miss him.
Okay. This is a good time, Chief, swearing in some new firefighters.
Appreciate it, thank you. We caught a real nice kind of streak this last spring/summer. Can you guys come on down, please? So we had the, it was back here in July, and we had the graduates from the Howell High School program, and the three that are here tonight came out of Farmington Hills. So we do a lot of regional training with each other. Farmington Hills hosted an academy. We had the three before you tonight, Novi Farmington, Berkeley, Beverly Hills, kind of West Oakland Commerce Township as well. So just indicative of the great mutual aid that we have. So I would like to swear all of them in. They've all passed their State of Michigan Firefighter 1 and 2, which is about 300 hours of practical and academic training. There's a state practical and written test, and all of them have passed that first go-around. So very proud of their efforts, and then they also completed our internal program as well. So great to get some more folks online and to booster our roster. So first one up will be Dan Leighton, and his father Pete will do the badge pinning. If I could ask the city clerk to swear them in, please. Swear Dan in.
May I just raise your hand? I state your name.
Aye, Dan Leighton.
Do soundly swear.
Do soundly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully.
Of firefighter.
Firefighter.
For the South Lyon Fire Department.
For the South Lyon Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Please spin the badge. All right, great. All right, next up is gonna be Austin Zurgat. Austin will be pinned by his mother Erin. If I could have the city clerk please swear in Austin.
I state your name.
Aye, Austin Zurgat.
Do soundly swear.
Do soundly swear.
That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution of this state. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of firefighter. For the South Lyon Fire Department. According to the best of my ability.
Please spin the badge. All right, last but not least tonight is Kane McGowan. Kane will be pinned by his mother Stacy.
I state your name.
I'm Kane McGowan.
Do soundly swear.
Do soundly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of firefighter.
Of firefighter.
For the South Lyon Fire Department.
For the South Lyon Fire Department.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Please spin the badge. Congratulations, Kane. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Chief. Congratulations, you guys. Quite the effort to get to this level and commitment. Definitely appreciated. Okay, then we'll know all business. So appointments and resignations from the boards and commissions. We have a resignation of Dan Pelchat from the Cable Commission.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Dan Pelchat. From the Cable Commission. Thank you. And add that we'd like to thank him for his service.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have appointment of Bob Martin to the Historical Commission.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's not getting away that easy. And we have an appointment of Linda Graham to the Cultural Arts Commission. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Is she here by any chance? No?
No, she's not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons we wanted to get Bob on the Historical Commission is because the concerts in the park take place in the historical district, and it's one of the things that Bob's done for years. He enjoys doing it. He does it very, very well. So it's our intent that this would be a continuation of that community service and the concerts in the park program, as well as whatever else he's gonna bring to the table for the Historical Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And he does such a good job of bringing his band in. It's his passion, like, if you know him, if you know Bob, you know, he might have lived in Haight-Hashbury or something. I'm not sure. People might know what that is. And we don't want to follow him either, so I think he's gonna be great.
The Central Commission like to say something?
No.
We're just so happy to have Bob come on board, guys. We know how valuable he is.
Thank you. Okay, consider designating an alternate to SEMCOG.
During a represent, a meeting with a representative from SEMCOG in early August, it was discovered that South Lyon does not have a designated alternate to represent South Lyon. Councilman Waddell is currently our delegate, but they usually recommend having an alternate designated in case the delegate cannot make it to the meetings, sign votes, things like that. In the past, I've attended SEMCOG events as the city manager and in an unofficial role as alternate as we prepared for the Safe Routes to School grant program. So at this time, I'm asking of the council, make that an official designation as the alternate for the councilman.
Actually, it's my opinion that we should have appointed a delegate and an alternate at the, after the last election. That never happened. So those of us, if I'm there still, it's a carryover. But I have no problems otherwise, unless we already have a delegate. Did anybody research that?
SEMCOG is the one that brought it to my attention that there isn't an alternate.
There is not, okay.
I just have a quick question, thank you, Mike. We need a delegate, that's what you're saying, right?
We currently have Councilman Waddell as the designated delegate according to SEMCOG.
Could he stay as the delegate after the election if he wanted to? I mean, it's a, sounds like it's something that he's done in the past, he's probably familiar with it. I mean, would there be any problem? Do you have to be a council member to be a delegate?
I think it should be a council member, and it would not be me in any case.
Oh, okay, so that answers that.
Thank you.
So we're appointing, oh, Mike, you had a question, sorry.
Yeah, I thought, and I thought I was the alternate. I don't know if it didn't carry it over.
According to SEMCOG, they don't have anything in their paperwork for us having an alternate.
Because I used to receive emails all the time from them on the, maybe it just expired, I don't know. I thought I was the alternate, but that's fine. I mean, I understand there's, I'm not running for reelection, so if you want to appoint somebody, no, it's fine. If we want to appoint the city manager, I just, I thought I was the alternate, so.
Well, I think it would be appropriate after the election that a delegate and a backup are both designated at that point. But for the interim, I don't have any misgivings with you being the alternate.
Yeah, I think that's the best one.
Yeah, I agree.
Soon as the election's over, then you can.
Choose somebody? Yeah. So I'll make the motion to approve Lynn as the delegate to SEMCOG.
The alternate?
Alternate, excuse me, as amended.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider approval of road closures for the Wings Hat Run. That's that time already.
Yes, first I'll call to council's attention my typo on explanation of topic. The date that I typed was last year's date, and the correct date is September 9, 2017, which is the date listed in the rest of the document. The route is the same as it has been in prior years. The road closures that would be required are 11 Mile from the East Drive of South Lyon High School to Martindale Road, and Martindale Road Arrow to 11 Mile. And I think I saw Coach Smith somewhere in the room. He's in the back of the room. He can respond to any questions that council might have, but the police department does recommend approval.
Well, I'll make the motion then that we approve the requested road closures for Saturday, September 9. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
2017, as requested.
I'll second. Harvey, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is it gonna be well-attended this year?
Absolutely.
Good.
Great, good deal.
Thank you.
Okay, consider approval of the road closures for the Pumpkin Fest Run.
Okay, Pumpkin Fest Run, it's not actually the road closure because council has already approved the closure of Pontiac Trail for the Pumpkin Fest Parade. I submitted this as an agenda item just because it's a, actually a second and separate event immediately prior to the Pumpkin Fest Parade, and I felt that it was worthy of council's consideration. Police Department does, however, again, recommend approval.
And it's good that includes their insurance. Well, I'll make the motion then that we approve the requested road closures for the Pumpkin Fest Run to take place on 9/23/17, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider the first reading of ordinances to reduce the number of planning commission members from nine to seven and bring the division into compliance with the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act.
As many of you know, the planning commission has struggled to fill its vacancies over the past several years. With Ms. Kapkowski's potential appointment, that still leaves two vacancies on the nine-person planning commission. It's a struggle. People don't have time. The people that do want to volunteer have young kids and therefore can't fill the position. Others don't feel that they are, meet the qualifications for such a position. State law allows us to reduce the number from nine to seven. It still means that we have one member that's outside the city limits, but I think this will be a reasonable solution to our challenges, not only in finding candidates to fill the positions, but also ensuring that we have a quorum for meetings so that applicants don't have excessive delays due to a lack of quorum for the meetings.
I think that's a practical solution to this. It's unfortunate that we can't get a full body or fuller body, just for different points of view, and what is the, the difference is, a quorum is four for seven and five for nine?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I mean, it helps to solve the problem.
John.
Yeah, I would, what I, I don't know if this was in the original ordinance. It might have been, but I always think it's good to expand your base a little bit because we are a smaller city, and the ordinance does permit us to have one member who is not a qualified elector of the city, but who is a qualified elector of another local unit of government. So it does allow specifically to, you know, if somebody from Green Oak or somebody from Lyon Township has a specific interest in serving on our planning commission, they may want, they may do business in town, they may have a business in town or whatever, or significant relationships. I think this is good, so you do have that option.
That's actually in our current ordinance, and we do have a member that fits that capacity.
Chair. John. I would say, I'm in favor of this. I would say the only disadvantage is if we were to have an aggressive push to get nine people, if we could. I know it's hard to get those people, but then having five, I guess the numbers, if that makes sense, to stack up, to have a quorum would be easier since you have a larger pool. But since we can't get the people in the first place, I think it's a practical solution. So I think this is good. I mean, it doesn't seem like there's any controversy over this, so I'm just gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to repeal the existing and adopt new Division 4 in Chapter 2, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of South Lyon.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider the first reading of ordinances to increase the value of purchases requiring the city council approval and competitive bidding, and clarify purchasing authority in emergency circumstances.
I understand. This is something that Tim and I have been working on in cleaning up our purchasing ordinance, making it more in line with current ordinances elsewhere as well as past practices. It does not change the need for council approval of different projects, but it does allow for ease of use. Values of purchases requiring council approval goes from 2,000 to 5,000. As we all know, expenditures continue to go up due to the cost of commodities, so increasing it to 5,000 is not an unusual amount. There are communities where council approval is not required until it hits $25,000 to $30,000. So I truly believe 5,000 is a reasonable sum, as well as the $5,000 approval for emergency purchases.
Personally, I would prefer that it is sanctioned by the manager prior to that action being able to be conducted. The manager can review it and make a determination if they have any misgivings with that, rather than just being able to freehandedly make an expenditure against the budget without approval, without notice to the manager that that's being conducted.
I think that's a pretty valid point.
The other, the 10,000, the 5,000 to 10,000, with, as long as that is a budgeted item, but I think that that's, that certainly should be locked to it. Anything that's not a budgeted item in the transition from, or in the purchase for $10,000, I think that causes me some concern. And our last couple of budgets have not been nearly specific enough in some phases to get a clear handle on some of those budget items, so.
Tim?
Mr. Mayor. To address the issue regarding the city manager's approval, as presented, the emergency purchases in the current ordinance, and this would remain so, the city manager is designated as the purchasing agent, and the language provided would be the city manager or his or her designee would have the authority to do the $5,000 emergency purchase, subject to reporting. So it wouldn't be any employee or even a department head unless it was first designated through the city manager.
Well, it's basically already in there, so.
I agree with that. That, and Glenn's point is very valid. It needs to, everything needs to go through the city manager on any substantial purchase. That's the gatekeeper of the budget. Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand this. So if there's an item that needs to be purchased that's under $10,000, there's still the bidding process requirement, right? You have to get three bids.
Correct.
But does a department head then have to get the three bids? Let me rephrase that. Can a department head do it on their own? Meaning that if they, if it's a budgeted item, say the cost is $7,500, they get three bids. At that point, does it have to go through the city manager at all?
It's my understanding there is a purchasing procedure where it goes through various reviews before you could issue a PO or enter into a contract to purchase at that value.
Okay.
I didn't see any language that reflected that in here, though, so.
Is it in this ordinance, or is it in a different?
And I can't answer the question. I don't know that I have enough information to answer whether there are separate purchasing protocols that are non-ordinance or policies about how to purchase and go through that channel.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, I mean, I'm all for having an ordinance in place that doesn't require, you know, everything over $5,000, if it's under $10,000, to go through us for approval. I just want to make sure that if a department head has an item that they want to purchase, that there's a procedure in place that, you know, before they go out and get bids, city manager is aware of what's going on, and then the city manager can follow, you know, make sure that the proper procedures are being followed, and that the bids are going out, and that there's whatever, so that when everything is presented, the city manager then can make the determination based on the bids that are received that this is one we want to go with, and these are the reasons why, without our approval. I just want to make sure that there's a procedure in place where it's, there's some oversight.
If I could suggest, I can certainly work with the city manager and find out the answers to that prior to the next reading. If we need to set this aside or delay it until we've resolved that issue, or if we have language changes in the interim, based on whatever we found out, find out about those policies and procedures, we could make those adjustments in advance at the next meeting and act accordingly.
So we can approve the first reading, but then we can make amendments before the approval of the second?
For the final one.
Yeah, okay.
If I could, if I could interject one thing, though, the idea of them having to get approval to submit for bids, I think that it's a good communication practice to end up giving them information and informing them that that's what you'd like to do, but the idea of actually putting the whole package together if they're, if they're solid enough in their position that that is something that's going to be necessary to do all the legwork and present the whole package to the city manager prior to end up, you know, investigating a purchase.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So my, my comment is that whenever we go through these readings, there's always two readings, is how it works. So there's the first reading, and then second reading, I'm just educating for the public and people watching that. So if we pass this tonight, this is not necessarily the final version. So what Councilmember Kramer suggested was we pass it tonight, we work out the, some of the kinks, get some questions answered from our city attorney, and certainly we can come back, and at that time, we can either decide to postpone it if we don't have a satisfied answer, or we can pass it if we're satisfied. So with that being said, I think that's an excellent solution to pass it today. If there's any questions, we can get that answered, come back to the table, and vote on it again, so. Yeah, Mike, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make.
Wait, Peggy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
The only comment I had was in Section 2-222, and I am not in favor of the purchasing agent to be able to solicit prices verbally. I think if you're going to solicit a price, I get it in writing. I'm very, very opposed to that, so.
Can I just address that?
Yes.
It's requesting a quote or an estimate. It's requesting a quote or an estimate that would be in writing, but do it verbally via the phone or some other method.
No action can be taken until it's firmed up in paper?
You would end up with a quote in writing that supports the bid, but the manner in which you obtain the quote can be verbally.
Well, then say that.
Yeah.
Then say the man, say, well, it may solicit prices. To me, to me, I think it's a little bit ambiguous because that's how I read it.
I think you have to read the second part of that sentence, which is, "Or may contact prospective suppliers by written communication."
Well, that, that would be great.
Yeah, I had concerns about that as well.
I used to want somebody coming in here saying, "Oh, by the way, I talked to Joe, you know, Frank and, and Mark, and, or Tony, and, and they said I could get ten cents on, on the nuts and bolts."
Can I make that a little more clear?
Just a little bit more clear. I mean.
I'll, I'll look at the terminology regarding prices and quotes and the method of contact and make sure that, is there an objection to having a purchasing agent go out and solicit verbally or by phone?
No, just to make sure that we get the quotes in writing.
Just, yeah.
Right.
That's my issue as well.
Yeah. No action can be taken until you have a written quote, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I expect that's pretty much what we've always had. We've always had three documents.
This is working with the language that you have, all right.
Right.
All right. I'll make the motion then to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the purchasing ordinance as presented.
Is that okay?
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, "Consider alternatives for contracting for an interim Class B operator services."
I will turn this over to Mr. Jesse Vandy Creek from HRC, who we've been working with on this.
Thank you. Good evening.
Welcome back, Jesse.
Here in council. Thank you for having me back tonight. Jesse Vandy Creek, Vice President and Principal of Hubbell Rothen Clark, Head Quarter in Bloomfield Hills of Michigan. Great to see you all again. I'm here tonight, of course, because of the departure of the Class B licensed operator from the wastewater treatment plant. City Manager Laddner contacted our office and asked if we would look into alternatives to bridge the gap between the time at which the city rehires full-time employment for that position in order to maintain MDEQ compliance with the plant's operations. In your packet, there's correspondence dated from our office last week. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read that to date. But essentially, the goal here, again, is to enable the city council and administration sufficient time to coordinate the search process for a new wastewater treatment plant superintendent and/or full-time licensed wastewater treatment plant operator. Again, so this period of interim services is what we're looking at here, stopgap measure. In that correspondence, there was a list of the duties included and some clarifications. I can address those if there are any questions. To get down to the approach of how we initiated this evaluation, we identified three potential alternatives for the council's consideration. One of those, the first alternative, was a shared services agreement. That's essentially where we reached out to wastewater treatment plant operators in the near area who already have a full-time position with the community. Due to the high demand for a Class B operator, it is not uncommon for individuals with that experience to open up an LLC, have their own insurance, and as long as it's not a conflict of interest with the community, to be able to provide those services to more than one community. So we personally, I personally contacted three individuals that I know who do this. And due to either their current workloads, personal commitments, or really just timing of this specific request, we were not able to get anybody to accept this opportunity right now. One of those individuals, however, said, "Come back in the spring, you know, I'm your guy." While the fact of the matter is, my client needs somebody September one. So unfortunately, we did go that route. I thought that might be the, again, not uncommon for us to do when we're just looking for a stopgap measure. Because we couldn't find an individual to serve in that capacity, we went the second route, which would be interim privatized services. Now, again, we're talking about not for operation of the plant. We're talking about an interim service to provide a Class B licensed operator at the facility, okay? Not a new administrator, not a new superintendent, not a new boss, the operator. The Class B licensed operator could be a lab technician, not necessarily somebody who has administrative, budgetary, supervisory skills. You simply need a Class B operator. So to that end, Highland Treatment Incorporated, some of you may be familiar with them. They've been around for forty-five years. They're located right up the street in Highland, Michigan. They provide Class B wastewater operator services for Lion Township. On one side of you, Green Oak Township, on the other, Milford Township, a number of communities. And they've been doing that for a long time. They have over twenty certified operators. They are the closest proximity to providing that service on a daily basis on both sides of the City of South Lyon and do have a Class B operator that is capable of providing the stopgap interim services to the extent that the city needs. I say that because you can see in the package, this isn't a contract. This is a quotation that was provided by HTI with a really short list of duties. However, in my conversations with them, one of the things they wanted me to make clear to you that it's basically an hourly rate and that their services, should the community find an individual to serve in the position permanently, their services can be terminated on a twenty-four hour notice. So in that capacity, there's no need for you to sign a three-month contract or a six-month contract where we're going to have to see those terms through even if we find a great candidate in the interim. That flexibility is, I think, a plus for, for the city. So with that interim privatized services, what I included in that package, of course, was Highland Treatment's quote, which is an hourly rate. I included their insurance certificate that they've obtained already in advance on behalf of being insured to, to supply that operator to the City of South Lyon and also the individuals' licensers that are currently, I think, valid through 2018. So that was the interim privatized services. Now, the last alternative we looked at was an interim, intergovernmental agreement. We all like to do that. You know, there's an opportunity to share services with the county or even with a neighboring community. We tried that with the neighboring community with their plant. That didn't work. So we went to the county. You know, we have a great relationship with the Oakland County Water Resource Commission. Met with the engineering manager there, explained our situation. Was able to arrange for an immediate tour of the plant with one of the top operators in Oakland County and with another engineering manager, not the, the division head who I met with, but the engineering manager. As it turns out, Oakland County, of course, operates and maintains multiple plants throughout the county. In fact, they took over Pontiac not too long ago. That's a twenty-four hour shift, Class A, three shifts a day. Essentially, the first thing they said to me was, "You guys are going to have a tough time. We've been trying to hire Class B operators for two years and we can't get them. But we want to help you out." They consider South Lyon, you know, part and parcel intergovernmental. You're one of the communities in, in Oakland County. They want to help.
You remembered we were in Oakland County.
They want to help. They want to help. Like I said, they did respond quickly to come out and look at the site. Mr. Ben Lewis, the engineering manager who oversees all of this, has shipped it up to Corporation Council, Ms. Kelsey Cook, and it's in their hands right now. The WRC does express that if, and I haven't seen the numbers yet, but they have expressed that it's likelihood that if we did contract with them to provide this position, that it would come at cost without overhead and profit. What that means, again, I have not seen the actual documentation because that has to come out of the Corporation Council. So that brings us to where we're at today. We have a, the need to have a Class B operator onsite starting September first, very quickly. So the recommendation that I had in the correspondence was, again, for the stopgap measure, for the ability to get out whenever you want, for the ability to satisfy the MDEQ and minimize your exposure for any regulatory non-compliance, we recommended that you actually proceed to negotiate entering into that hourly rate contract with HTI. Again, a simple stopgap interim measure, Class B licensed operator only. We also recommend that the council allow HRC and the city manager to continue to work with the WRC in the event that your search ends up taking longer than anticipated. Then it may be, if it's legally viable, then it's financially justifiable, then perhaps at some point, we would make a change if this drags out. But I think you have to take that first step to make yourself covered. The second step, you can get a better deal. But ultimately, the goal here, obviously, I think, is to hire a permanent full-time replacement. To that end, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, I guess, is.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sure, thank you. But the, the current people that we have working there now, somewhere down the line, we were going to have to bring someone in to be the filling of the position of Bob eventually. Is there people there now that are potential candidates for getting certifications up the ladder, you know, down the road? I'd like to think we have some people there. I mean, I'm not, I'm not using them as a stopgap. I'm just saying we need to think a little more ahead this time.
We, we actually have. We have a fully certified operator on the water side. However, we are about two to three years away from having a certified Class B operator on our current staff. That is because for each step, for each different classification, you have to be in that position for a specific number of years before MDEQ will allow you to test for the next level. So we're still a few years out on the Class B wastewater, but we've got our water side operator covered. That's why we're only looking for the Class B wastewater.
So Jesse, in your opinion.
And one, and one other thing to add to that, obviously not being responsible for your administration, but certainly having a very close relationship with it for twenty years plus now. That ascension element that you discussed is in place. Again, there are folks that are continually advancing to get their licensers. And in fact, at one point, the city did have a Class B operator. Andre, lab tech, he passed the Class B and unfortunately left the city for another position a couple of years ago.
So in your opinion, Jesse, is that part of the reason why you think when you talked to Oakland County, they said they're having a hard time filling Class B licenses? Is because they have that requirement with the, with the amount of time on the job and the experience and then?
It's very challenging to, it's a significant time commitment. Unlike many other technical programs where you may be able to sit or take some classes for a year or two and then take an exam, this one's not like that. You literally have to demonstrate and be allowed to sit for that section by the state who evaluates each one of the, the minimum requirements of operating to that level. So it's a little bit, and they've changed the education requirements, unfortunately. That's part of the problem. Back when Andre was with the city, Andre, I believe, was one of the last lab technicians that was able to get his educational experience that was necessary to sit for the exam based on his time spent in the lab at the City of South Lyon and being a certified laboratory technician accepted by the state of Michigan. Right after that, they don't accept that anymore. Now you're back, you got to have two-year associate degree. So if you've got guys in the plant that have all the operational experience in the world, but they don't have the education, they need to go back to college at the same time.
I'm taking book smart people over people that have practical experience that know how to actually do something.
So it is a very, a highly desirable position right now that folks like Oakland County that have a fairly sizable benefit program and whatnot can't fill. So again, they've expressed their willingness to help us try to, because they know it's not a full-time person. It's the period at which the DEQ and the licensed operator feel is appropriate. So if we can work that out with them, I'd like to go that way. But really, the stopgap measure is to most likely move forward with the operators that's known entity right here in the area and, and again, the ability to pull the plug overnight.
Joe.
Oh, Maggie, you want to say something, Maggie?
Go.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Oh. I just wanted to, I don't know where the email went. I just wanted to disclose to council that on yesterday, late in the afternoon, I was reading my packet and going through the materials and I do have a conflict of interest with respect to alternative number two, Highland Treatment. And I immediately emailed Lynn, put Tim on copy, and also had a conversation with my client about it. So I think it's just suffice to say that I have a, a conflict of interest, given that they're attempting, if, if you want to go, go through what the issue is, but, you know, I don't know how to, to go from here. You know, what the nature of the conflict actually is. So I don't know how much disclosure should be permitted.
Nice, Tim.
But, but I cannot vote or discuss anything regarding alternative number two.
I did receive the email and I'm, I'm aware of the issue. I don't know that it's my place to shed any light on the nature of the conflict. I think you have all the information. I have very little other than what you've provided.
That, that's all that I'll say at this time, so.
So Jesse, thank you for bringing this before us. I got to say, there's a couple of things that stood out in, in your, in your comments was, first of all, when you stated that when you contacted Oakland County and the soonest they could get somebody was two years or something like that. So to me, that was kind of a, a sign that these positions are very much in demand and it's very specified and very specific and technical. So for you to be able to put together a plan on short notice in order to get somebody here is just terrific, especially on short notice, and it just shows that we are moving, moving good and moving well. Now, the other thing that also stood out was not something you said, but something you wrote. And that was with the hourly rate of ninety dollars an hour, you, you said that they may be in the range of forty hours a month. Therefore, a monthly range can be anticipated and the amount of a minimum of eighteen hundred to thirty-six hundred dollars. So what stood out to me was, okay, if we're going to have this, let's say, worst-case scenario, if it takes a year, this will cost us approximately, what is that, thirty, close to forty thousand dollars? So, right, so, but, but to me, if, you know, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to bring out the numbers, but if we, you know, that's obviously less than what we were paying Bob before he left. So for ninety dollars an hour for a highly technical skilled position where they may not, that's at the maximum forty thousand. It may be anywhere from twenty-five to thirty, upwards to forty. But I would want to guess that it may be closer to twenty-five or thirty. I don't know. But what I'm saying is for that type of skilled position, this is really a steal, especially if Lynn is going to be overseeing this. We don't have the, the expense of a, of a department head. My only question would be for Lynn is if you feel comfortable taking on this work.
I do in the short term. In the long term, we will need to get someone in that can be out there with the operators day in and day out.
Okay. Now, is there, let's say, a number two that Bob had that could be, help out in the meantime?
There are foremen in all departments, DPW Water and Wastewater, and I'm working with them. I met with all of the departments last week. I will be spending an hour or two each day with those departments overseeing things, signing the paperwork that's necessary, answering questions of the employees, things like that.
So I, I cannot stress how important it is that, and thank HRC enough, that they brought in somebody qualified for this testing because as we all know, water is a very sensitive topic right now. And to have that person with that technical ability and to get it on such short notice is, is great. So that answers my question. Lynn, you feel comfortable? I, we, we put our trust in the city manager to run the city, to empower the city manager, to empower their, their foreman and the person that the city manager oversees. So with that, I, I'm very comfortable with this.
How's the search going for a full-time replacement?
We have not started the search. I was going to talk about this later in the evening. Early September, we should have new higher retirement options for MERS to bring before the council. So I wanted to get those brought before the council and hopefully a decision made before we started the selection process so we'd be able to properly let candidates know what the potential future benefits. so we'd be able to properly let candidates know what the potential future benefits are.
Okay. And then as far as the salaries, since Class B licenses are in such high demand, do we have any idea what a salary might be for a range for a full-time employee with a Class B license?
It's going to vary highly depending on the type of plant that it is and realistically, the, how well that plant operates. So I say that because you'll see Class B operators that have relatively simple, small plants with no problems that may be at a lower end of a range, whereas you'll see that same operator in a community with the same size, same plant, but much more rigorous regulatory responsibility would be a significantly higher salary. What I can do is I can work with Lynn. You guys are MML members, so we can utilize MML. And we can also utilize the Michigan Water Environment Association, MWEA, who all of the operators belong to. And I can bring back that information as part of your search or provide it to Lynn so you can understand what kind of range you're looking at here. These are great questions, though, and I'm glad you guys are thinking ahead because what I found in the last three weeks of going through this is that these folks aren't out there. There is a significant gap in our generation, if you will, at this trade. And Oakland County just simply mirrored what I was finding in their, you know, willingness to wanna help, but the capability of them being able to find somebody, and they're a big entity for two years. So there might have to be some interesting incentives that get offered when you guys put that package together.
My biggest concern, and it was, it still is, and I'm in the engineering field. I've worked for environmental engineering firms for a while in the past. And knowing Bob the way he was, and he'll be the first one to say his guys, you know, they've always been super responsive to fixing emergency situations in this city time and time again. They went to the final hour every single time and hit a home run, you know? So this interim thing is extremely important. Getting someone on full-time is even more important. But if something was to happen, God forbid, again, like we've had happen, where a pipe busts or sewage goes in a bad way or something happens. You know, water is, like I said, like Joe said, water is hot commodity right now. And we've been operating at a pretty high level here in the city. So my concern is we really need to get after this, you know?
You do. And I don't wanna get too far off topic, but notice the recurring theme. I do keep saying hiring a licensed, permanent licensed Class B operator and/or a superintendent. And I say that because what I'm finding, the hybrid like Bob Martin that Oakland County's looking for, that's an administrator, a superintendent, a budget person, and a license holder.
Not gonna find them.
They can't find that hybrid. So they, and I think I should pass this on to you, it's my professional duty. You may be looking at hiring two people. You may be looking at a Class B licensed operator that's, again, a lab tech like Andre had. But Andre wasn't an administrator or a superintendent. Certainly wasn't the boss of the staff at the plant. But you may have to hire an administrator and superintendent. It's more common for that person not to have the licensers. There's a separation these days. Whereas back in the old days, it was you got brought up under Lyndon Beebe. You got trained how the budget worked, how to manage people, how to work with council. Now, that's a hybrid person that's really, really hard to find.
See, I wasn't done. I'm sorry. See, that's where my concern is. I think Bob did have a plan for two to three years, continue working until one of his guys actually got his certification. And now we're at a position where we went from having Bob's position, which was hybrid, to having now to actually have to hire two people. And if there's such a high demand for Class B, you know, I'm just concerned at what that's gonna do to, A, our, you know, our budget for personnel in the next year, two years, three years, four years, whatever you look at it, until one of our, even if one of our guys gets his Class B certification in two years, you know, at that point, we might have a full-time employee already with a Class B. It's just.
Well, the good news is they're not gonna be full-time who we're hiring now. I mean, they're not gonna be in the office 40 hours a week with benefits, pension. This is somebody that you said we can terminate on 24 hours notice. So I'm not worried about that at all.
Right, but we're paying up to $40,000 for basically somebody that has a Class B license that doesn't have to worry about administration or being there 24/7.
Yep, and Lynn said she would take on responsibility, so I think that covers that.
For the short term, but if there's such a.
Well, it still boils down to three people taking Bob's place. So I mean, it demonstrates just what a huge failing that was to lose him. Actually, well, you didn't talk about the issue, you just talked about your conflict thing. If you wanna go.
Yeah, the comment that I'll make on that is I can remember a year ago talking about succession planning in the city. And I think this is just one of the areas where the city has fallen behind. I think anybody out there can tell you that any of the tech schools are understaffed with students. Biology is not a preferred course for students to take. Lab work is not, science is not on anybody's radar in terms of vocation. So I mean, if you understand the demographics of where your workforce is going, this was clearly foreseeable. So I think, you know, you're shaking your head, you're absolutely right. So I think that we, as a city, did not plan well enough for this day. This day is here and you just gotta knuckle down and realize that we have a changing workforce that is out there and adapt to the workforce that you have. And that will be a budget issue that will be addressed down the line. That's it.
Retirements are not a new thing. I mean, it can't, like we said, Bob was a hot commodity. Water's a hot commodity. For him to leave and go somewhere else and advance his career, you know, still getting his pension, I think that's good for him, so.
He took a pay cut. I don't see how that's advancing his career.
Irrespective, he's still, yeah.
Mike's comment earlier was very valid to the point is that getting someone, if we have someone that we bring up through the ranks and in two years they get their license, just because they work for us, they're gonna become a hot commodity. So what you said earlier is we have to pay attention to the incentive or how we're going to address this position when it does come because we have to entice somebody to come here, you know, so.
But you know that Bob had taken that into account with this, grooming this fellow into the position to be able to manage that Class B license aspect.
Don't know now, you know? I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're protected.
How are they gonna bill? I'm sorry.
Yeah, lemme, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any indication when general counsel from Oakland County will come back with a decision on whether they can play in our backyard?
That's a very good question. I was in contact with their office again this morning to see if there was anything I could bring here this evening. They're aware of the fact that I'm here this evening. And essentially, what I've conveyed to them is that I was gonna convey to you that they are still very interested in helping the city out. And the sooner we can get it out of corporate counsel, the better off we all are because then we have our answers, our stipulations.
What's different with us than it is the other communities that they're already engaged with?
They already had those. The only thing that they took on was Pontiac a couple of years back that I think they felt they had it with staff. And I don't wanna speak for them, but I do know that they have not been able to hire.
You think it's a staffing concern?
Purely staffing.
Okay, all right, well, that's, I can understand that then.
Now, but from the legal side, you gotta remember too, I'm dealing with the engineering staff, management staff, and operators. And they're saying, we can do this. But again, the Oakland County legal, typically they provide full administration. They take over the plant.
Oh, I see.
We don't want that.
Right.
And that's why what you see on my first page.
We just want a hired gun, yeah, right.
Those duties and clarifications came out of a meeting specifically with Mr. Ben Lewis, the engineering manager. So he could take that to corporation counsel. So they understood that this is a hybrid we're asking for of them too.
Yeah, the limited scope, yeah.
And one of the things that I did hear, though, in some of my meetings were that a lot of times they require a minimum of a six-month agreement. So I just, I gotta tell you that. So they may come back at the end tomorrow or next week and say, we can do this for you, City of South Lion, but here's our agreement and you're on for six months no matter what. So that's something I might have to come back and we're gonna have to hash out again when we get the details back from corporation counsel.
Except for their sched, well, could I finish? Except for their scheduling, I don't understand why they would have any misgivings and obligation for timing. If they, if they're retailering people's schedules to account for us, maybe I could understand them needing some obligation that once they set a schedule, it can be running for a while so it doesn't throw everybody into, you know, crazy, Bill, but.
The good news is they have said that they think they can do it.
Yeah.
And the engineering manager, the operator who would do it has been to the plant, just like HTI was. And they have said they can do it. They're basically asking for permission now from legal.
Well, hopefully, they're conveying that strongly to legal then. There's an indication in there that the state may end up, you had projected that there is an obligation of, was it 20 hours or something likely? And the state may end up imposing something more than that. Is that, when will we have an indication from the state what their feelings are on that?
Well, the way this is gonna work is there's not a hard fixed time. It's, does the certified licensed operator, is he confident that the operations and the plant affluent limitations and the lab data are accurate, that he can put his license on the line by signing? So it's usually an agreement that's worked out between the districts, MDEQ district staff and the operator where it's an interim situation like this.
A matter of the complexity of whatever chemistry set they've gotta run over there?
Complexity of the plant, complexity of the transition. In this case, realistically, your plant is fantastic.
Yeah.
You guys invested into it 12 years ago. That plant has plenty of capacity, has excellent affluent quality, no violations. It should be a relatively simple plant to run. And that's what Highland Treatment gave us was, we think we can do this.
And staff that are familiar with the way the thing operates, so.
Again, when I talked, got deeper into it with Water Resource Commission and the DEQ, they said, well, that, don't tell them it's only gonna be, you know, 20 hours a month because we have a transition here too, getting to know this individual and making sure the paperwork's all done right. So to some degree, the interim individual chosen is going to be at the mercy of the regulatory folks on making sure that they're acclimated with the time he's spending there, that he is spending sufficient time there. You know, there's essentially a level of trust that needs to be developed. So that's why I suggested the contingency. And the 40 hours came up specifically from MDEQ. They said, one day, or one hour a day, I'm thinking more like two hours a day. And that might not even be enough at the beginning for the transition. So again, I like to bring everything I can to you so you understand this and you're not surprised later. Your first monthly bill may go a little bit over $3,800, Councilman Rizzi. It may not. I don't expect it to be significantly higher than that, but there will be reactionary component to this, if you will, because it is regulated under the NPDES permit and the MDEQ enforces that for the federal government here in the state of Michigan.
Okay, the license holder is the one that will be submitting documents to the state. Okay, so if they have a relationship already with people in the state, that should end up softening that quite a bit. The, okay, now the functional aspect of, we've got a licenser, or the licensee that's going to be giving Lynn the rundown of what needs to take place? I mean, there's some linkage here that doesn't seem to be connecting to me.
No, the intent of this is specifically to hire a class and Class B operator for satisfactory compliance with the MDEQ for the same, meaning time at the plant that's necessary. The person we're looking for, for the interim Class B operator, will execute the monthly operating reports, MORs, by the operator and submit them to MDEQ through the My Waters. My Waters is a program that the city got certified on and already has up and running at the plant to report all this. No more reams of paper. And the interim Class B operator would report directly to the city manager. The only thing that this individual is responsible for is the monthly operating reports and certifying the affluent quality to the waters of the state that the City of South Lion is bringing in as raw sewage and treating and emitting.
So it'll be the existing staff that are still operating the plant. They're just simply, they're the ones that are validating the results.
Correct. Mr. Beeson's here this evening, one of your senior. And again, Ron is the one who is certified to operate your drinking water plant. He has all the licensers. Now, I full well expect that the existing staff at that, at the wastewater treatment plant has not only the professionalism and the experience to operate that plant, based on my own observation over the last decade of them running this new plant, that they will be just fine at running the plant. Ms. Ladner would serve as the interim superintendent. So basically, the budget, the books, the decisions, the guys used to just go into Bob's office and say, you know, this pumps down, it needs to be shipped out. Bob looked up, it was in the budget, here's a line item, you know? That's all gotta occur now through Lynn.
Okay.
So basically, the administrative responsibility to the plant, as a supervisory standpoint, falls to city manager. The existing operations of the plant, not licensers, operations, the plant is well-staffed to handle it and has been exemplary. And I see no change in that moving forward.
So your time on this is going to be charged against the enterprise fund?
It should be, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
How are we gonna keep track of the billing? Are you gonna be receiving a bill each month? Is it quarterly? How are we gonna get it?
From HTI or whomever?
HTI, yeah.
I would presume it would be monthly.
Okay.
It would be monthly. And right now, I would suggest that he use the same log-in, log-out procedures that the plant staff has in place right now. So when he's there, he's there. When he's out, he's out. That can be turned in as well.
We're not getting billed from the moment he leaves his home to come here? Okay. The other communities that are using HTI, are they using it on an hourly basis like we would be? Or do they have contracts with HTI?
You know, I found this unusual. I thought everybody would have a form of contract, you know, this thick, it looks like our contracts.
Right.
Whether it's a road job or sidewalk, the contract looks that thick. HTI operates essentially on an agreement hourly rate with Lion Township and Green Oak Township as well.
Do we have?
Do you look into doing that for us?
Again, it is a very.
We need some roads and we don't wanna pay for all this paper.
Waste water treatment plant operators in your region for 45 years.
That's what I'm getting at. Do we, I mean, is there any way to do a comparison to see how much time HTI is actually doing the same thing that they're doing for these other communities with us? I mean, I just wanna make sure that we have an understanding that it can fluctuate anywhere between $1,800 and $3,600, maybe more a month. Is that similar to what the other communities are experiencing as far as their use of the Class B licensing?
Actually, in the other communities, it's more.
It's more?
And I say it's more because they're actually operating the plant.
Okay.
They don't have Ron Beeson and James and a wonderful staff that's been trained. You know, they don't have that. Whereas, you know, their HTI in those plants is actually tearing down pumps and, you know, everything's on a maintenance schedule, it's gotta be done. He's not doing that for us, so.
I guess my biggest concern is the amount of additional work this is gonna be placing on our city manager as far as handling the administration of the wastewater treatment facility on top of her responsibilities managing the city. I mean, this almost sounds like two jobs.
I cannot implore you how important it is to find this, go shoot high, search for the hybrid and offer a good package because you need this person because it could take too much time.
Can we get Bob back?
More time than you want.
No, I'm serious. I mean, this is, we had a great deal.
Thank you. I appreciate the research and I agree that the option two is probably our best interim bet. And the fact that we have trained operators on staff already that will minimize the use of the Class B operator. But I think what I'm more concerned with is the hiring process going forward. Do we have a job description? Do we have a performance or a formal job offering to publicize? Where are we with that? And who's gonna write the performance requirements for that job offer?
The job description we do have.
Okay.
As for putting together the advertisement, I planned on working with HRC to make sure that we notate the specific skill sets that we need that I may not be aware of. And my goal is to plan on advertising as soon as we have the MERS situation locked down.
Well, we have all that already to go though, pretty much, is what you're saying.
Right. MERS takes 30 days to do their projections. So as soon as Bob gave me his retirement, I made sure to contact MERS. I'm expecting. his retirement, I made sure to contact MERS. I'm expecting early next week that we will have their projections back and to bring them before council at the first meeting in September.
Okay, so the, so the question then is, when we write a proposal or a job offer, are we writing it for just the wastewater treatment plant or for the water as well?
It would be for both.
For both?
Water and wastewater, and still identifying whether we believe it's possible to find someone to manage water, wastewater and DPW as we had Bob do, or whether that would be two people.
Yeah, that was something that we kind of lucked into during the recession, and Bob was good enough to take it on. And he, you know, did more than, he excelled with it. So, I don't think we're going to find that again, but who knows? But I'm very concerned that we have a comprehensive employment plan here for advertising this position.
We do.
All right, thank you.
Maggie?
I want to go back to just the interim period, because that's what's on the agenda tonight, is Lynn is being proposed as the interim administrator for WWTP. I'm looking at this, and this was almost the same situation when the job position, there were many of us in the community that did not believe that DPW and wastewater should have been combined under one head, only because it leaves the city extremely vulnerable if that individual leaves. I mean, that, I think, was the main concern years ago. And this almost seems like this is the same type of issue here with you acting as the interim administrator. Is, is there not anybody over there that is not seasoned enough that could be promoted to begin giving them some, if we're going to be working on this hybrid model, is there not anybody over there that doesn't have the skill set that could, that could be promoted and moved up the ladder that can work their way into a managerial position, handling the budget, whatever, now?
We have very good employees and foremen for the day-to-day operations. However, Bob never worked with them on the financial side or the administrative side, including payroll, things like that. So, no, in those departments, there is not someone that is ready to just move up and be promoted and take over the administrative responsibilities. Doesn't mean that they can't be trained to do so, but they're not ready to just step into that position right now.
That's a good point, Maggie. I mean, and what you said, Lynn, is also too, could that person, if there's someone over there capable of handling those duties in the future, shadow you a little bit on some of the, some of the work that needs to be done will also alleviate some of the tension and stress you're going to get from this, and help bring them up to a level that you feel confident enough that you could turn over some of those duties to that person possibly. Plus, it's going to make that person pretty happy too, because they're showing that we have some confidence in our people in the plant, which I do. I've heard this from Bob forever, so I trust our plant tremendously on, you know, protecting us. So, but I think that'd be a good move on all of our parts to try to have something like that take place a little bit, you know? I don't know who that person is, but it sure would help you too, you know, so.
John, if I may, to that point, I would say that, I don't know, obviously, I don't think any of us really know too well the ins and outs of the wastewater treatment and the water facility plant, but it's very, I can imagine, very complex. And I'm a firm believer of promoting within. So, we have very, very skilled employees that have these capabilities, and if they can learn how to run a plant, I'm pretty sure they can learn how to figure out a budget. I mean, that seems like the least of my concerns at this point. So, I think the main thing is, I think we have a solid plan in front of us. Jesse, again, you did a great job. Hopefully, it doesn't come out to $40,000 a year. I'm going, I got you on tape saying you don't think it's going to be that much, so, but seriously, hopefully it's not. We have a plan in place. I have full faith, myself personally, in Ms. Ladner. I think, you know, obviously, we don't want this to be a full-time thing, but if you're willing to take it on, that's kind of why we hire you as well, to oversee all this. So, hopefully, we start working on a, on a plan. So, I guess my next question is, and then also in parallel, we look to promote somebody within. I really think that should be the number one, number one objective, is to look and see who we can already promote. Because I know, at least in the DPW, you have some ideas, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think we should have a similar parallel path in wastewater. I guess my, my question is, so what are you specifically, Lynn, looking for us tonight? Just a direction? Or are you looking for us to approve this agreement or an option?
To pick one.
To pick one?
And it looks like there only is two.
I would actually recommend and ask that the council authorize me to contract either intergovernmentally or on an interim privatized basis with one of the options with a not-to-exceed amount estimated at, I'm going to say 5,000, because we don't know that first month, whoever we get in, what the DEQ is going to require. I don't believe it'll actually exceed $3,600, but I would like to give the Water Resource Commission an opportunity to look at this. They've only had two or three days for it to sit on the desk of their corporation council. We've got a couple of additional days this week. HTI, if we need to, we can sign on the dotted line and come up with a interim agreement on Thursday to go into effect on Friday, which is Bob's official first day away from the city, and we will go from there.
Okay, then I will make the motion to authorize the city manager to pursue option two. Actually, it says alternative number two, interim privatized services, and authorize the city manager to begin discussions with HTI with a dollar amount of not to exceed $5,000 a month for preliminary discussions.
Can the agreement be that if Water Resources gives us the okay, that you can just bail on that and go with them?
That's what I would like, yes.
Yeah.
Well, anytime we can terminate it within 24 hours anyways, even if we signed an agreement.
Right, but I'd like to hold off selecting HTI tonight.
Right, right. I'm just given authorization, to be clear, to allow you to begin those discussions with the possibility to sign an agreement up to 5,000 if you so choose. But I'm not saying we're nominating them.
Then I also need authorization to work with WRC and possibly sign an agreement with them.
And authorize with the city manager to work with WRC, WRC, I apologize, and sign an agreement if necessary. So, as amended.
If possible, yeah, all right. I'll support that.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 I'm staying.
Thanks for the help, Jesse. That was very helpful.
We have a roll call since we haven't, it's staying.
I think it was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
You can call for a roll call.
Well, I mean, I suffered the.
Go ahead, it's a roll call.
Yes.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Yala?
Yes. Thanks, Jesse.
Wino?
Hi.
Yes, yes.
I'm staying.
Discussions.
Budget.
I apologize, I did not prepare anything specific on the budget this evening. Lori and I have been finalizing details of the audit, getting them information that they continue to ask for, and so that's been my primary function in terms of budgeting and financing over the past several weeks.
I always have something on the budget. Once again, I asked tons of questions. Plant ran, also had an opportunity to sit down with Lori. She was excellent, and I want to thank her for her time. I'll put my notes together for the next meeting. One thing that I did get some emails on, and so I'm going to go over it again, is the unfunded pension liability. There were some questions from individuals in the community. And the, you know, there is no answer. I think what's important is, is that we're beginning to talk about it and beginning to look at how difficult this is going to be as a problem to solve. And you can solve it if you want to from the revenue side of the budget. And on the revenue side of the budget, that means that you could raise taxes, and you could do that either through a mill that would increase the operating funds in the budget. You could also do a designated mill, which I think Lion Township has, where they have a mill that's designated solely for public safety. So, I would, and that would be a voter initiative sort of solution. So, that, so you can solve this problem on the revenue side of the budget by increasing taxes. I think it's always important to take into consideration those in the community that would be affected the most by raising taxes. And that clearly would be our senior community. The additional way to solve this problem would be on the expenditure side of the budget. That means you would go in, you would cut a little bit from the DPW, cut a little bit from maybe all your other little budgets, but you have to look at every department in, in terms of how you're going to cut. And the reason the police department has been mentioned as, as a possible place for substantial cutting is because the police budget for 2000, let's say, 1718, this current budget is about 2.5 million. Our overall budget is about 5.4. So, the fire is, I mean, the police department is about 46% of our budget. In 2018, 2019, it would be close to 49% of our budget. So, one way to reduce the largest expenditure we have would be to, if, 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 this is just an option, this is, this is just talking, is possibly to dissolve the South Line Police Department and to contract totally with Oakland County Sheriff. That would be a substantial savings. Or what you could do is go to the chief and say, look, chief, we need about $600,000 cut from your budget, because that cut is going to be used to begin paying down on the $5 million unfunded pension liability that we have. Or what you could do is you could do a hybrid. You could do a little bit from the revenue side and raise a mill a little bit, and, and then patch it with cuts on the expenditure side. I don't know what that formula is. I don't have any answers. I don't have enough facts. But I would surely hope that council would reach out to the community and to the stakeholders and, and let people from Colonial Acres, let our senior community have some input into this decision. Because if you're going to raise taxes at any level, you have to be concerned about how it's going to affect them. I think you also have to talk to people that have a very fond attachment to our police department. I know I do. It's not a preferred option by any means, but it's an option. And I think that we need to start talking about this problem, like everybody else in the country is talking about this problem and, and working towards solving it. So, there is no solution out there, and I think that we need to do a tremendous amount of communication and networking in the community and let the community have some role in, in steering what they are interested in having this thing solved. So, I just kind of wanted to say that, because I did get a lot of questions on it. Some of them, I basically said it's irrelevant, it's over and done, and you just deal with what you have in front of you now. And what we have now is a budget that needs to be taken care of on that unfunded liability. Additionally, what I wanted to bring is, I think sometimes, I don't know, but I've done some additional reading, and I want to bring to council's attention that there are two issues that may create tension on this council, but, but I would just want to explain why the issues keep being brought up. The first one is with overtime, and what is the relationship of overtime, and why do people on council, you know, question about overtime? I'm going to present an article, it's, I'm going to call it Exhibit One and have it admitted into the minutes, is, it's about the effect of overtime on pensions. And, and the Lansing State Journal did an article that found that some police and fire departments in Lansing had retired with pensions that were paying more than their actual base salaries. For example, one police sergeant retired with an $88,000 pension after, after his annual salary of only being $70,000. City administrators in Lansing said that the overtime that increased some of the Lansing police and fire pensions between 2010 and 2016, that the overtime was directly related to understaffing. But when you went back in and looked at the numbers, it wasn't. It was a, it was a scheme that was built into the budget of overtime that was directly given to certain employees. And, and I, when I read this article, I said, you got to be kidding. And so, I contacted MERS and spoke with them about just some basic questions. And here is, here's how it works, is that if you have employees that are receiving levels of overtime, and they are within five years of retiring, their total wages will be included in the calculation of their pension. So, this is what happened in Detroit, was the overtime was so high for those that were retiring that they were collecting pensions that were two times higher than their annual salaries. So, when people on council question this overtime issue, it's being questioned for the purpose of accountability, making sure that the overtime is, in fact, absolutely necessary. But it's because of the interplay that overtime has with the pension. So, and you've got to remember, you're going to be paying this money out for 30 years once that person retires. Bob Martin's a healthy guy. I don't know when he's going to start collecting his pension, but if he starts now, I mean, he's 30 years out, minimum, of collecting that pension that the city's responsible for. Also, I found out from MERS today that vacation pay is also included in that five-year average calculation prior to retirement. So, if one retires, let's say, you know, Bob, you know, August 31st, he gets his paid vacation time, that time gets included into his wages. So, his wages just now went up by the amount of that vacation payout, and that has now increased the value of his pension. The problem when you have these mechanisms in place, as it was explained to me, is that you have people in the community that are going to be paying the price for this. Sure, the employees are taken care of, but you, you have to look at these pensions and ask yourself, you know, how much are you going to continue to stack these pensions and make the city pay for pensions that are above possibly what someone's annual salary is? I think, I think South Line, I think it's 80%, they take out whatever. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that there's some very legitimate concerns and issues that are being researched. I don't have all the answers, but the articles are definitely coming out and flooding the market as to how these pensions have been inflated. And I think that I'm going to continue to ask questions and peel the onion back and move forward with trying to analyze and come to a good pension program that's fair to the employee, but also fair to the taxpayers, because they're the ones that are paying for this. So, that's it for the budget. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the comments. So, I think it, I think that's a common theme, is these pensions and the budget. And to that point, I mean, if somebody's making $80,000 a year, city employee, and they're getting paid 80%, which I, my understanding is common, for the next 30 years, what is that, 64,000? And that's almost, I mean, that's exactly a thousand less than what Lion Township is paying for their wastewater head. So, you can see how this, these prices add up, and it's really something that the city has to take on as these long-term obligations. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again, that for the most part, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I would be safe to say that 95% of people in the workforce do not receive a pension. It's just something of the past. It's a dinosaur. It's bankrupting cities, and it's something that's a really serious issue. And I think it wasn't until recently that these issues have been discussed. Now, as it relates to the police department, you know, people are starting to talk about this in the community, because it's a serious and real, it's a real thing. When you have 50% of the budget going towards the police, that's, that's a big obligation. And to be clear, I personally do not want to lose our police department. I love living in a safe city. That should be the last option, is to pursue contracting through Oakland County. But it isn't a real issue. I mean, I'm not going to. I mean, I, I'm not going to, she's not here to speak to it, but I distinctly recall Council Member Mary asking Lynn to look into that option. And so it's something that's being requested to be looked at from council to, to contract through Oakland County. But to be clear, I'm not for that, and I think that would be the worst option that we could make, quite frankly. As it relates to the taxes, we did have a, a large tax increase that was thankfully offset by the school. My understanding is they refinanced their bonds, but they, they did lower their bond rating, that, excuse me, millage debt, and that offset our city increase. But as it stands right now, if, if we don't make some cuts, then it, it looks like there may be a tax increase next year, and I'm going to do what I can to make sure that we don't have to go through with that. So, but as it relates to the tax increases, what I would state is, it is our seniors that are hit the hardest. They pay a lot, they, they pay the same taxes as we do outside of Colonial Acres and outside of the, the senior communities. And my understanding is, if I could ask a question, Lynn, do they, and I think I know the answer, but they do not receive plowing from our DPW, correct, in Colonial Acres?
In Colonial Acres, no, because they are still private streets.
Right, okay. So they pay the same tax rate as, as anybody else who lives outside of Colonial Acres, but they don't receive the same services? So to me, that's not fair.
But approximately forty percent of our residential areas in the city are private, so it's not just Colonial Acres.
Absolutely, but, but the point I'm making is that they pay the same taxes and they don't get the same services. And to me, that's an injustice.
All the other private places.
So, so, excuse me, I'm, I'm not done talking, please. So as I was stating, they pay the same taxes, they don't get the same services. And for example, if it's not just the, it's not just the, the, the snow plowing, it's the fire hydrants. I know that was an issue until we got that fixed and they're dedicated and we're slowly dedicating the, and that's what's supposed to be doing. We're fixing some of these injustices. And, and it's not just that, but also if we need to get, get the roads fixed, heaven forbid, we have to request a dedicated road millage if this, if the state doesn't get its act together, Colonial Acres residents would most likely be excluded from having their roads fixed. And it's not just Colonial Acres, it's the other private residencies, Quail Run, et cetera. And, and it's just, it's just not fair. So I think this is something that the council should look at, perhaps maybe next year. You know, maybe how we can fix some of those inequities, if that's extending services or whatever it takes, but I don't know. That's just something I want to have as a goal to discuss for next year. Thank you.
I want to say one thing on the, I mean, one thing about the budget is that it's not hidden from anybody. This is a problem we all have across the entire state, it's a problem we have all across the country. Things aren't, costs are going up so high, so fast, and we don't have, you know, we're a community sitting here, we're four miles square, kind of close, with thirty-nine miles around us. And they're getting development, they can't build the houses fast enough. You know, I mean, these people are coming here from these other communities like Livonia and places where they're having problems selling their houses, so they're losing tax revenue, and they're having to consolidate. Schools are having to close, they're having to lay teachers off. I have a friend that's a teacher, she's been pink-slept five times in a row in Livonia. She never knows if she's got a job or not. We're not in that boat, but we're getting there because we don't have all this luxury of all this growth going on around us. We're only four miles, less than four miles. And we've built out pretty much as far as we can go, and we're counting on Bob to help bring some more people in, to give us some more money and help our residents, but bottom line is, we're all in this boat, you know? And whether we like taxes or not, which I hate, I would wish I could never have to pay a tax. But in reality, that's not the case. We have to. We take all these services for granted, you know, your water, your sewage, your police. I love having the police as my neighbors, but the best neighbor I've had in all the years I've lived there. I live next door to the police department, so you all know. I like the idea that I can tell everybody that we're in the top one hundred in the country for the safest community. You know, I mean, I think that there's something to be said for that, that less than a minute to get to, you know, to response time, I've seen them. You know, I mean, our fire department, same way. Our water, we have our own water facility, we're not contracting from Detroit. You know, I mean, it's like, so we have a lot of things that, that belong to the city. And we've all taken that for granted. Bob used to say, "People think you turn the water on, you turn the water off. You flush the toilet, it goes where it needs to go." But people don't realize what it really takes to get it there. So whether we want to raise taxes or not want to raise taxes, it's going to come up over and over again, time and time again, year after year, budget after budget. So I'm hoping the taxpayers understand, this council doesn't want to raise taxes. No council wants to raise taxes. No city really wants to raise taxes, but we have to sometimes in order to keep the services that you keep, that you have. You may decide you don't want those down the line, you know, and some of those things, and then that will be something we'll have to decide. A new council will have to decide, I won't be here. But I think those are things that we all have to definitely take into context and understand where this is headed. And it isn't unique to South Lyon. We haven't had any abuse with the system. We haven't, we've done, just like a lot of other communities, there's things that we got behind on because it caught up fast. And circumstances come into play, things get taken for granted, transitions take place, and next thing you know, you find yourself in that boat with a few leaks in it. So, just so that people understand that Joe's correct, I don't want to raise taxes, I don't want to put my name on that, because first of all, I got to pay it, you know? But there's a reason why a lot of us aren't moving either.
Yeah.
You know, we moved here twenty-five some years ago under that, that head, you know, that, that tax. For me to move a mile down the road or move in a different part of the city, it's going to cost me six, seven, eight thousand dollars a year in taxes, I, I'm not doing that. That makes no sense to me, my age now. So people like me, people like Glenn, who live downtown, we're state and put, we're not going nowhere, so you're not getting our, you're not getting the tax increase. Or these communities that are growing so fast, they've got people coming and going so quickly, you know, even though we are rated as being a very high growth area, we're kind of like an island in the middle of this big massive growth, you know? And we're trying to manage that in our own little section, but we need a lot of help from the township doing their end of it too, as in roads and things of that nature. So losing Bob hurt us, we'll fix that.
Can I ask you a question, John? I, I think you, you stated it very well, and, but would you agree that actually the budget is probably the number one issue facing us?
Oh, absolutely.
We agree.
I agree.
Thank you. Yeah.
That's all I got.
Just as a point of information, safety, public safety is every city's biggest individual expenditure, so we're not unique to that. So, and MERS, there's been pressure through the state to finally get MERS to look at, in a more rational way, of ways for communities to transition to something that's less onerous than their existing defined benefit plans. So, and we're, you know, we've been in the investigation phase, looking at that information for a while now. It's, they've finally softened up what the entry point is to make it financially viable to be able to do something, and we're, we're seriously pursuing those kinds of things in upcoming negotiations and contracts. So it's not like we've been sitting idle. It's, unfortunately, MERS is sort of a rigged game and they hold all the cards. Once you, your community takes a vote and you are in that membership, you're sort of subject to their rules. Luckily, state pressures have, all these municipalities and things have finally put enough pressure on them to come to some more realistic way to attend the transition to a more, either a hybrid or a defined contribution system of retirement as opposed to the benefit system. So we are, we're accounting for that kind of stuff. But the one good saving grace about MERS is retirement is a very long-term circumstance. Nothing, no address is going to end up being immediately solving our issue. It's something that you, you, we'll set up a program that will attend to it over the same duration that it's taken us to kind of get in Dutch. So that'll be squared up. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah, the, the issue isn't about transitioning right now. That's something that, that's a given. You have to do it. I don't think the city has a choice. You have to transition out of the city paying ninety-eight percent of, of the pension. What, what my point was is talking about the unfunded pension liability portion, and I think that when I spoke to MERS, they, they confirmed it, is that it does increase at, at, at an increasing rate. So the, dealing with this unfunded pension part, it really needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, and sooner is in the next six months. At least find a hundred thousand dollars, at least do something to start paying this amount of money down. And when we're talking about the pensions, I don't think, I, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think anybody is advocating that the present employees have a change in their pension program. My advocacy clearly has been in dealing with, dealing with the pension for, and pension changes for new hires. And that is why I advocated for a hiring freeze, want to start making these changes now with respect to whether or not employees receive their vacation money, and begin working on those programs now. But I think your most immediate need is, is dealing with this unfunded pension. You have to understand, your city is no different than a little small company. You're going to have the business cycle, the business cycle goes up and the business cycle goes down. And about every five to eight years, you're going to have these fluctuations in your economic environment. And that's part of the problem, how you, how the city got into the five million gap. And you probably aren't that far off from another slight recession in which property values will continue to be stagnant and you will have less money to turn over to MERS. So this is going to be a constant battle until it gets under control. I was given some suggestions on how to deal with it going down the road, once you have a plan in place, but that's for another night. But to me, this is the most immediate that needs to be dealt with, and that's why I keep talking about it. But we're still here talking about it.
Just one final comment, thirty seconds, John, if that's okay.
But thank you.
So, yeah, and, and to the point of how serious it is, this unfunded liabilities, it's not one-for-one comparison, but if you look, think of it in terms of the national debt, the higher it goes, I mean, what was it? I remember, what was it? It used to be four trillion, and now it's, I don't even know.
Can't measure it.
Twenty, twenty trillion. And it's all going towards major expenses, just throwing it down the toilet for, for interest that you're just wasting. So the point I'm making, though, is as the debt increases, it doesn't go down unless you really work at it and there's been not much to do to work at it. And it's the same thing with the MERS. So we can start talking about how everybody's in this plan and this problem, and we can keep hoping and praying that the state will come in and fix it, but I'm not, I don't put that much faith in my elected officials from, from the state of Michigan, that they're going to come in and solve all our problems. I, I just don't. So the point I'm making is that, that number keeps going up, it used to be two point seven million, two thousand thirteen, now it's over five million. When do we say we have to get serious? Ten million? Fifteen million? Who, you know, it's just, I'm going to keep talking about it as well. Thanks.
All right, Bob. I think we've talked this to the council. Amen.
I provide everybody a copy of the report. Any questions?
Bob, when's Tropical Smoothie Cafe?
I'm not sure. Every time I go up there, it looks like they're working on it, but there's never anybody around.
Well, they said it was going to come in soon.
There's another one I saw outside of the city that's in the same position.
I actually spoke to our building department, and they had a final inspection scheduled for today, so it may be as soon as this weekend.
Good.
Depending upon how the inspection went.
Great.
Kept teasing us, we're ready.
Good stuff.
It all looks good, Bob, just want it faster.
Sure. The over-the-road banner, the last item on the list, those are for over-the-road banners. So hopefully we'll get that done. But yeah, everything's going well.
Like some kind of timetable?
Uh, well, we'd just have to get the permits from the road commission and get it done.
So I didn't get an opportunity to go as early as I'd have liked on Saturday. I want to say one of our businesses in town held their, at Fury Fest, and from what I hear from everybody and from what I experienced for a couple hours, I was there in the evening, it was crazy successful. They brought an awful lot of people to this community.
They were jammed all day.
Jammed all day.
Yeah. And a lot of people haven't been here before in some cases. I told some people in my office that come from way on the east side, and they said, "You got to come for this thing because you're not going to get it again for another year," and it's, it's pretty special. You know, they do it to big fundraiser and, and they put a lot of effort into it, and it shows. So when the business owners in this town are starting to do these things, it's getting noticed very quickly. So I'm hoping that it just keeps rubbing off because right now it's all positive, it's all good, you know? And it's like, we just got to find places for people to fill these, the little missing links. How's the wine bar question?
Uh, they're working on final negotiations of price per square foot. Technically...
Everybody's asking me, so.
I mean, it's not a done deal. We hope it happens.
Is there another player in this? Do you know of?
No, just the new building owner.
I caught wind of it, I caught wind of it.
The new building owner, we're talking about the quilt shop, the former quilt shop. The new building owner, Tom and David Law.
I know them.
And the, the potential proprietors of the wine bar.
John, one thing you mentioned was the, the attendance. I think, you know, you're hinting at that at least, and that's one common theme across the city, is that not just Fury for the Feast, but it's the car shows, it's the, it's the farmers' markets. What else am I missing? Blues Brews and Brotts?
Pumpkinfest.
Pumpkinfest? I imagine it's going to break some records. It's just really, really positive, how much is actually getting done and how much people are taking an interest in the city and these events, and it really speaks to the residents. And they're the ones that, you know, credit for that, so.
Yeah, the, the...
And you, Bob.
The events, the credit goes to all the residents for those events, absolutely.
And the volunteers.
And the volunteers, absolutely.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Um, well, we already talked about the MERS. As I said, I'm anticipating receiving information from them in early September. Will be brought before the council for you to review and potentially select one of the options, so that's a step forward. Upcoming events, the farmer's market continues on Saturdays through October. City Hall will be closed on Monday, September fourth, for the Labor Day holiday. The annual Labor Day Bridgewater will be held on Monday, the fourth, in McCatty Park. Sign up is at eight-thirty and the walk begins at nine. The Historical Society will be holding their annual depot days on September ninth. That's a wonderful event, another one of those things that brings people into our community. And would like to remind everybody that school starts next week, so be on the watch out for buses and kids walking and teenagers driving to school. First of the year is always a little hairy as people figure out their new routes, new timing, but just make sure you're on the lookout for that. As you're aware with the recent retirement of Bob Martin and the soon-to-take-place retirement of clerical employee Christopher Gentick, these positions are such that they can't be left vacant. We'd talked about a hiring freeze, but as we discussed with Jesse, we have to have somebody to fill in on that administrative level, department heads for the DPW water wastewater. The clerical position for the PD, if that were to be left vacant, it would result in taking an officer off the street, and we would prefer to make sure that we have our officers doing what we pay them to do, which is enforce the laws and take care of our residents. So unless there is a specific concern by the council, we will move forward with those positions and hiring as soon as we've got the MERS situation resolved.
Well, it's ready to go to that portion, so we're ready to advertise for that person.
Right. The PD clerical we have because they have a much more specific criteria of things that they're looking for. Knowing that we could get an interim for the wastewater, that one we will hold off until MERS is fully finalized.
That was my question, was that will the new hires be on the pension or not?
They, the goal is to have the new pension in place for these new hires.
So some sort of a hybrid, not a full, full-on pension?
There, there will be several options for you guys to look at, a defined contribution, modified defined benefit, and a hybrid.
Okay. At least, to me, that's a step in the right direction because I remember there was, a few years back, we were talking about this MERS, and it, it was just, hey, we have to hire somebody, no plan, just, they'll get on this system and it's, that's what's crushing us, is, is these legacy costs. So I'm glad to see that, and to be clear, Maggie kind of said this as well, anybody who's on a pension now, that shouldn't be touched, obviously, but it's going forward, and that's what we need to prevent and look, look out for. For the, for the clerical position in the police, if, in a pinch, can you put a cadet in there? Because I don't think they have a high salary.
We are down to one... We are down to one cadet, and they only generally work twenty hours, but Lloyd could speak better to that.
Just, you know, in the interim, or, sure, that's probably not what they wanna do, but...
We do use the cadet in the clerical position for lunchtime relief and days off for the clerical person. But there are things like the law enforcement information network, we're required to have what's called a, a terminal agency coordinator. There's many special things required by the state and the lean policy council that require a highly skilled and very much vetted person in that position. It would be somewhat easier with two cadets, but the city manager is absolutely correct. The only way to get by right now, once the clerical person is gone, is to take an officer off the street and have them essentially fulfilling a clerical function. And that clerical function, right now, is being done by one person. Back in, as recently as two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, police department had two full-time clerical, and, um, we, we cut down to one. Since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we are down two full-time police officers. We continually do the best we can with what we have, but when bodies aren't there, then things like response time are going to start to suffer. There was discussion earlier about the level of service that seniors get, whether it's snow plowing or different services. One of the things the police department does, and we do it usually several times a day, is lift assist to people that don't have a medical issue, so, but they've fallen, they can't get up. And I'm not intending to coin a phrase and advertise for, for the alarm companies.
Right.
But, we do save money that, if the fire department got toned out, it's going to cost you a minimum of a hundred, two hundred dollars, because you're toning several firefighters out, if it's not during the duty day. When the officers go, their response time is very quick, and as long as it's not a medical issue, the officers are more than happy to help the citizens up. So, there's, while there may be less of one service in any specific seg, segment or sector of the community, sometimes that's made up for by a higher demand for a different kind of service.
Yep.
So, if we don't have the bodies, then the response time or the services are going to suffer.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I'd like to ask, did you go through that Parks and Rec, uh, equipment purchase information?
Which part of it? I mean, I've looked through everything that they want.
Yeah.
I've sat in on the meetings with them while they were deciding.
Okay, well, they had made the request last meeting. We, we approved it to the extent that if it were, uh, well, we approved it, and the hope was that that Lions money was going to end up funding the purchase of that equipment.
Yes, that, that's the goal.
Do you have a feel for, I mean, they sounded as though they were ready for that purchase order to go out, so...
They haven't brought the purchase order to me. I don't know if they took it directly to Lori, but I haven't signed anything for it.
No, I, I don't think that their intention is they're going to be putting it together.
No, they wouldn't take it to Bob, I thought, before he left.
Bob was going to put it together?
Yeah. That was my understanding.
So, Bob may have signed off on it already, and it's already taken care of.
Okay. All right. And, and the whole Lions fund is where that funding, funding will be?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, all right.
John, one question. Do we, do you anticipate to have the vacation policy in front of us?
Uh, yes, at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Harvey.
Well, thank you. It was nice to see some new firefighters again today. I don't know where you're getting these young people, but they, they all seem to be well-trained and eager to go. I think it's, I think it's a great advantage to us. And also, we got the email the other day about the improved, is it the ISO rating? Boy, that's a real benefit to the city, because that affects everyone's homeowner's insurance, and congratulations to the department on all of the work on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mike? I've been asking for a while, can we look at doing something for that crosswalk for the bike trail in I- Mile?
Yes.
Just because, I mean, every weekend, I am stopping there to let people cross, because the traffic, a lot of time doesn't stop, or doesn't even know there's people there. So, is there any way we can look into doing something there?
I can talk to Oakland County about putting in a hawk signal. That's what you have. You most recently would see them in downtown Brighton. They're lit up, and it's only when pedestrians cross, so it basically, as they enter, it's a stop for everyone.
I think that'd be a really, um, great benefit for everyone that uses that trail. I just don't wanna see a kid or somebody hit trying to use the, uh, the bike trail. That's all I have. Thank you. Joe?
So, I wanted to mention Fury for a Feast. I know everybody, well, a couple of people already spoke about it and praised the event, and I will do the same. But I wanna take a little different spin on Fury for a Feast, and the thing that impressed me the most was not only the event of, of having people come together and, and a nice community event, but it was the partnership with the local businesses. And what I mean by that is I know Bushes was involved, and Bushes was actually, for those who weren't aware, maybe didn't attend, they were actually donating food. If you were a partner with Bushes, I don't know what they call it, the, I know Meyer has Empurks or...
I think it's My Way.
My Way. So, anybody who's in My Way, they were donating. And then if you weren't, you could sign up. So, I mean, it's kind of a win-win for Bushes, but the point is, they were putting their cost out there and investing in the community, and partnering with a local business. And when I think of Bushes, I, I kinda, I don't think it's a chain, per se, but it is one of the larger ones. So, to have that involvement, it just speaks to the good management over there at Bushes, the partner with Ryan and Aaron from the hat. And, um, also Gleaners was involved. And I know in the past, there was unfairly, a little criticism that was donated to Gleaners 'cause it wasn't necessarily local, but there are people in South Lyon who benefit from that. So, you know, all the credit to the Witch's Hat and partnering with these businesses, and entertainment was good, everybody had a great time. I saw John there, Maggie there, and, um, it was, it was a lot of fun. A lot of the mayoral, mayoral candidates as well. So, I wanted to talk about that. Next, um, the other event is, speaking of Witch's Hat, the Witch's Hat Run. Want to encourage people to sign up for that. Lynn, as I recall, you did that a few years as well. And, uh, that was pretty nice to see our city government getting involved and, and kind of being a cohesive team there, and, and really going through with that. But it's nice, because, you know, we talked about the events, and these events, it's not just good for our residents, but it brings a spotlight, because it pulls the people in from other communities to really see what we have to offer. So, I know with this Witch's Hat Run, that there's, I mean, these runners are, I, I don't do it anymore, but it's kind of like a, almost like a, I don't say cult, that's the wrong word, John, I don't know.
No, it's a good word, 'cause I use that for my crossfit, so...
Okay.
It's a cult.
But they, you know, they go from all over the...
But it's a good cult.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, I'm gonna get in trouble for saying that. I apologize. But, so, it's, it's a good event. Harvey touched upon the fire, firefighters, and not to this point, to its bound a little bit, Chief Kennedy, I think it's great how many of these firefighters we're bringing in. They're, they're young, talented individuals with bright futures, and I just, to me and to the kids, they're just heroes. So, thank you for that. Keep, whatever you're doing, keep up the good work. Thank you. Last, on a, on a final note, just wanted to mention that we are going into a closed session to review, um, the collective bargaining agreement for our wastewater treatment and DPW employees. You know, I, I looked at this contract, and I'm not gonna go into the specifics, but I, I will say that one of the themes that we have with our city is this budget, and is our unfunded liabilities. And I think there's sometimes some disagreements in how to approach that and handle these, these obligations, and, and kind of what I think could eventually bankrupt the city if we don't get a handle of it. So, the particular agreement that's in front of us, I would say it's not favorable to the, to the taxpayers. We have great employees, it's very favorable to our employees, and that, that's great, it's good for them. It means they got a good union to negotiate for them, but unfortunately, it's not favorable to the taxpayers. So, on this particular agreement that we're, that we're reviewing, I, I have some serious hesitation on it. So, just wanted to say that going forward, keeping in mind, we do need to put the taxpayers first, and, because ultimately, they're the ones that are gonna have to bail out if we do keep that debt increasing, and we don't get a handle of it. So, with that, wanted to say thank you, good night, and thank you for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Lynn? Chief Kennedy, I just wanted to say thank you. In an era of having difficulties with recruitment and retainment, you're, you're really holding up your end of the deal. Really like seeing the, the new blood coming in here, and, um, I, I just hope that you have continued success with that, because you, what, is that seven? Yeah, seven recently. That's, that's very, very helpful. So, I'm, I'm hoping that's a real trend, and that there's a resurgence of people wanting to participate in that kind of a program. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Maggie? Yeah, I have a, a couple of things. I just wanted to let everybody know, I attended Saint Joe's Catholic Church's parish picnic. And it seems like every event that I've been going to the, the past eight months in this town has been packed. This was another packed event. It was a tremendous success, and I heard from some of the individuals that were working the event, that they think that it was probably one of their largest attending, uh, social events that they've had this year, outside the Friday Fish Fries during Lent. Also, what I'd like to do is send out a huge thank you to the employees of Peters True Value Hardware. And the reason for that is, is all summer long, I've been going over there and buying trunkloads of topsoil, and I was doing it when, when it was like ninety degrees, a hundred degrees, and they were so polite, they were so kind. And I just wanna thank every single employee that carried a bag of dirt and stuck it in my trunk. That is a great hardware store, wonderful individuals that are over there, great employees, and they're located here in the city of South Lyon. So, please, uh, please support your South Lyon hardware stores. I think Great Lakes Ace is in South Lyon, and so is Peters True Value. So, please, let's, uh, keep our money in our local South Lyon hardware stores. I also attended Fury for a Feast at the Witch's Hat, and it was packed from one o'clock, and I wasn't there at one, I got there later in the evening, but it was packed. It was packed on the inside. And I think everybody knows I ask a lot of questions. So, I talked to a lot of individuals, and I would say to them, if I didn't know them, so where are you from? What brings you here? And, uh, here's some of the cities where the people were from. Ann Arbor, Celine, Romulus, Livonia, Royal Oak, Ferndale, Milford, Novi, Lyon Township, Howell, and Brayton. And everybody had a fabulous time. I, I, I had a great time, I, I'm just telling you. And it was packed. So, um, I also had friends that were up at the Howell Melon Fest a couple of weeks ago, and the big topic was South Lyon's Pumpkinfest. Everybody was getting excited about that, and I have a feeling, I'd like to agree with Joe, that may also be a record-breaking, um, event that we're having in the town. So, I'd like to thank Kathy Swan and her volunteers, and the sponsors, who are gearing up for this particular event. Next, uh, there will be, I just wanna bring this up, the fallen heroes memorial will be held up in Pontiac. It is held up in the county. If anybody wants any further details, this is on nine-eleven. And I would hope at our next council meeting, which is on nine-eleven, that we spend a couple of minutes in silence after stating the, um, saying the pledgesions, and do our own private thirty seconds or whatever, remembering our Michigan fallen heroes. Not only that, but all those that lost their life on nine-eleven. I too am only gonna say, on the, uh, union contract that we are going to be reviewing tonight, as a dairy farmer once told me very, very early in my political career, Maggie, milk cows, not your taxpayers. So, that's my comment. Milk cows, not the taxpayers. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a wonderful Labor Day weekend. Stay safe, and thank you for inviting me into your home, and I'll see you next week.
And I'm not gonna say much, but all I'll say is, beginning I live downtown, and I've been here over twenty-some years, almost approaching high-end twenties now, uh, traffic, I can say firsthand, has greatly increased. It's not just people going from point A to point Z. The amount of foot traffic downtown has increased a lot. Getting off my street has become very difficult at times. I think it's a good thing. I mean, it doesn't really bother me, that's the reason why I live downtown. But to see these new businesses that have come into South Lyon and making an effort to fill a void that we didn't have, and their passion is ridiculous. I mean, you know, I had a business years ago down, we had a couple of them downtown. We were kind of a little ahead of our time, I wish we were doing it now, you know, and it seems like it's catching on. People are finding great things to do in these shops, and, um, and they're finding other shops now, 'cause they didn't come downtown before. And, uh, the coffee shop, Lafayette Corner Cafe did something which I thought was brilliant, especially with the arc theme, is they drew big angel wings on the building.
And butterfly wings.
And butterfly wings. And, and they had all these people come into town, including one of the police officers, and, uh, little kids, and they just took pictures with the angel wings and things, and, and it became, it was just becoming quite an item. I mean, it was just very creative, that's all. And, uh, they've worked a deal out with the farmer's market, and they're getting fresh flowers in there on, on, on Sunday mornings, you know, which they never did before. I think Witch's Hat's doing the same. So, they're all starting to kind of work together, a little bit of synergy we used to talk about, and it's all looking up. And I wanna say one thing to Chief Kennedy over there. I should've said something a long time ago. I saw you firsthand in action that one day, when I had to go grab you, because some friends in the neighborhood had a problem with, um, their nephew. And I watched firsthand how fast, and how quick, and how well you handled that situation, that there's a reason why all these new guys and new girls are wanting to be part of the South Lyon Fire Department, and that's because of you. So, I wanna say thanks. So, with that, that's all I got to say, and, uh, thanks for coming into our home, as everybody says.
We need a roll call.
And I, and we need a roll call.
Well, I'll make the motion, yeah.
I wanna say one thing, though.
Sure.
I find this ki, I hope you guys find this as funny as I do, it's late. Closed session under section, for the Open Meetings Act. So, it's just, you know, we're going to close sections, talk about open meetings, so I'm fine with that kind of thing, that's all.
Well, I'll make the motion that we enter into closed session under section eight B of the Open Meetings Act, connect with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement.
Ms. Mayor, it's eight C.
Oh, eight C?
I'll second.
As amended. Thank you.
All favor.
Hi. We gotta do a roll call.
Roll call.
Yvonne?
Yes.
Rizzi?
No.
Ellis?